All right, well, welcome. It's a little after seven on Tuesday, August 18th. And I want to call the, to call to order this special meeting of the Ferndale School Board. My apologies for being a little bit late, but our budget hearing ran over just a few minutes. Before we get into the agenda, will everyone please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Erin, are we gonna have a flag? All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda, 2.01, is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or to propose any changes.
I will make a motion to adopt, whoops, adopt the agenda as written and.
All right. It's been moved to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. The first big topic on our agenda tonight is adopting the 2021 district budget. We have been discussing the development of this budget for the past six months with updates at nearly every school board meeting. The final version of the budget has been posted on the district website over the week. Just prior to this meeting, we conducted a public hearing to take comments on the budget, which was also advertised in advance. So I think we had about 16 attendees at the public hearing as well as 11 panelists. All of the board members have discussed the budget through its development. All have had a chance to review its final version. All have had access to Dr. Quinn and Mr. Dibok if they had questions about the budget. And all were present at the public hearing. At this time, I would entertain any additional comments or questions about the budget from members of the school board.
I'd like to make a comment. A lot of feedback. Um, a comment specifically to Mark as far as for helping me to decipher what I was reading. As he said in our last meeting, the F-195 is not really a user-friendly document to wade through, but I do think with his help and his expertise on there, it made it a lot easier to know what I was reading. And I encourage, if there are other people who have questions or think that they see something in the budget, to, to ask him about it. If something, you know, raises a question, ask him and he's great help. So thank you, Mark, very much.
Thank you. And Erin, are we able to move back to a regular screen? Or am I the only one still seeing the American flag instead of everybody else?
There's also a little, a bar that if you hover over between where you see the strip of pictures and the flag, a bar will show up. You can move that bar and make that flag tiny and then you can see everybody.
Okay.
I think the biggest comment that I'd like to make is just to the staff for all the hard work they did. As, as Mark mentioned within the, the hearing portion of our meetings tonight, this has been a budgeting year that no one could have ever predicted between the levy failure and the whole pandemic. So, you know, kudos to them for the hard work and, you know, to all his staff for, for working on it.
Yeah, I would echo that. It's been, I know everyone says unprecedented time, but it, it has been. And certainly for our budget, it's been one that has required Mark and his staff and all the administrative team to go back to the drawing board and really rethink how education is offered in Ferndale, pandemic aside. So I certainly appreciate all the work that has gone into the many revisions of the budget that we've discussed and seen. So thanks, Mark and your team.
Mark, one question in regards to things, you mentioned that the budget just counts on half a year's levy. If with the, if I understand things correctly, if our budgetary needs change because of the pandemic and/or we, when we pass levy, we have more funds available, we would need to do a supplemental budget at that point to do any different change or difference.
So first off, I would thank you all for the, for the kind remarks. I'll pass those on to the folks that, that deserve it, that worked on the budget so hard. The, we can receive revenue without making any kind of a formal modification to the budget. If we exceed the approved expenditure level, so if we receive the levy funds and, and determine that we need to increase our expenditure above the level that you're setting tonight, then we would have to do a budget extension, which is a, is a formal resolution, a formal process that you would approve, that we request from OSPI to spend money that was above what you had originally approved in the budget. Basically modifies the appropriation that you're going to approve tonight, hopefully. Does that answer?
Yeah, that, that answers. Would it be the same thing if we have to adjust spending related to the pandemic? You know, if one, if we've got limits set in one area, but we need it in another area?
No, no, as long as it is in the general fund, if, if we tried to do something across fund, which there's very, very limited ability to, to do that, it would be a, we're allowed to do that. So we can shift from one category to another without any formal action.
But we couldn't take from like our bond, the capital projects fund and put it into the general fund. That's a no-go.
No, no, yeah, we can't use that money for operations.
So if in the, if in any of the funds, we decide that we need to spend more than already is in our total expenditures column, then that's when we would do the budget extension?
And you would have to have revenue to, to basically offset that. Yeah.
I have a question about the MSOC. Cause you said that that was for the material supplies and operating cost?
Other, but operating other, yeah.
So close. Um, and it is the money we get from the state, but then it's all of our expenditures. So if we had had a levy that passed, we still would only as income list what we got from the state. So that one is always going to have a deficit on it, correct?
Yes, in very rare circumstances, I guess there are some people that could underspend that. And that was actually the intent of why the legislature requested that be put in place, because they were concerned that districts were underspending their MSOC budget. But I, as you can see, it's, I don't see how that's going to be a very, a very frequent.
Maybe, maybe they can take the cumulative MSOCs from all the districts around the state and see that they're underfunding schools.
Yeah.
All right, other questions? All right, since everyone's had an opportunity to ask their questions, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 19-2020 approving the 2021 district budget as attached here to and made a part of the minutes.
May I ask one more question before we make a motion?
I think so.
Linda, you had said before that we needed to have X number of hearings to hear from the public. We had the one this morning. Did we, we only needed one? Okay. All right. I'm good with a motion then. If, you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'm, I move to adopt Resolution Number 19-2020, adopting the 2020 through 2021 district budget as attached here to and made a part of the minutes.
All right, it has been moved that we adopt Resolution 19-2020 approving the 2020-2021 district budget as attached here to and made a part of the minutes. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, it has been moved to adopt and the motion passes. Thank you. And again, thanks for all the hard work and the explanations. So the second topic on our agenda tonight is adopting the Ferndale School District 2020 reopening plan. Once again, this is not new to us. We began talking about plans for reopening schools almost as soon as in-person learning was shut down last March. One of our board members, Leanne Riddle, was asked to serve on the State of Washington reopening task force last spring. For the past two months, our board has been regularly kept apprised, sorry, of efforts by our administration to engage families and community members in developing a reopening plan that meets the guidelines of OSPI, the Department of Health, CDC, and Labor and Industries, as well as our community. Two members of our board, Leanne and Melinda, have been members of the 60-person Ferndale reopening task force, which has met every Tuesday evening for the past seven weeks. At our last special school board meeting on August 4th, we heard a strong recommendation from the Watcom Department of Health not to begin in-person learning in September. And in response, the board directed Dr. Quinn to shift gears and focus on opening Ferndale schools with all students learning remotely in the fall. In short, we have been involved in this process from the beginning and I am pleased to announce that we have achieved a milestone in the planning process. In time for August 19th due date by the state, we have a final version of our Ferndale reopening plan, which the administration prepared based on input from the Ferndale task force and according to the required template from OSPI. Board members received a written copy of the reopening plan to read in advance of tonight's meeting. It has also been posted on Board Docs. Tonight, we are going to get a here, we are going to hear a presentation on the plan from some of the people who served on the task force. With that, I'm going to turn the floor over to our two executive directors of teaching and learning, Ms. Kelly Larrabee and Dr. Fay Britt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, can we do a screenshot? You're able to screenshot.
Thanks. Okay, I'm gonna let Kelly start us off here.
Fantastic. Well, thanks for joining us this evening and thanks for allowing us the opportunity to present the amazing work of our reopening task force. As Andrew mentioned, we had over 60 community representatives join us in this endeavor. And we are so proud of the collaborative sentiment of this group and the support that we've received from our community in these efforts. So we are really appreciative of that. And what I'm going to do is Rebecca is actually going to start us on the first couple of slides and then we'll get started with our different subcommittees. So Rebecca, go ahead and get started if you don't mind. Rebecca, you are muted.
Thank you. Thanks, Kelly. All right. Based on the recommendation of the Watcom County Health Department, we are proposing that we open our schools and that was adopted by the, the school board as referenced earlier, that we reopen our schools on September 2nd in a distance learning model. But I also want to note that an amazing amount of work was done by our reopening task force to address all the various scenarios that we will be opening our school in over the time as we get back to our in-person learning, which we are so eager to get to at some point in the future when it is safe. Go ahead, next slide, slide P, please. And this, I'm gonna head, or hand back over to Fay, who's gonna talk us through some of our expectations that were put in front of us in the planning.
Thanks, Rebecca. And while this may be review for some, it may be new for others. So just to review, when school ended it, we were given guidance from the Superintendent Public Instruction about how to think about reopening schools. We were bound by specific OSPI commitments. We had new statutory requirements for the fall. We were given scheduling considerations to think about and to determine what might be best for our own community. And we were given action items for implementation. So OSPI's commitments for the 2021 school year, what, that they are expecting our districts to truly support our students further from educational justice. That's how students who need additional support in their learning. We are expected to prepare for health and safety and within that meet the Centers for Disease Control and Labor and Industry Guidelines to keep people safe and reduce the spread of the transmission. We're also expected to invest in connectivity and hardware so that our students could access learning from a remote location and use our own local experts as well as provide training to support that work so that they, so that our people can be effective in their roles as we move into the next year. Sorry, it's jumping. There we go. So our statutory requirements included ensuring that we have a reopening plan, which is what we are presenting to you today. We are expected to, in order to receive our apportionment, we have to make sure that we honor our instructional hours and days requirement from the State Board of Education. We're required to take daily attendance and keep our enrollment current and accurate. We're required to assess students both academically and socially and emotionally. We're asked to identify the essential learning standards that our students would truly need to be able to move on to the next level and make sure that we had scope and sequence to be able to accomplish that. And we were asked to consider our grading practices and what they would look like for 2021.
And I'm going to pass this one back over to Kelly.
Thanks, Fay. So as you may recall, we facilitated a survey at the end of the school year. And the survey was based on the feedback and guidance that we had received from OSPI. And OSPI initially provided guidance and still has continued with that regarding scheduling concepts for our consideration. There was quite a bit of local control in terms of which model or how we elected to use it. But the three models they gave us for consideration included a split or rotating schedule and they called that a hybrid model. They proposed a phased-in learning option, while some kiddos may be on continuous learning, but it wasn't identified specifically on, you know, who would come in, at what point, certain grade levels. And they also identified that there would be a continuous learning 2.0 in the event of a rapid movement to a closure, so being prepared for that. So we administered a survey at the end of June, just asking families what their individual's preferences were for their students based on these models. And then we also processed these options with our reopening task force. And our Ferndale School District, based on that feedback, selected the following three models. And this is for both in-person and distance learning. We selected a hybrid, which was an AABB schedule. And AABB basically represents students being in school two days every week with remote or distance learning three days a week. And the AA represents two consecutive days. So our model that we propose is students coming on a Monday and Tuesday. And then another group of students would be coming on Thursday and Friday. So that's the AABB model. We also identified a phased-in model. And our Equity and Access Group will probably reference this a little bit more in their presentation, but the recommendation is that we would potentially phase in students and bring them in in small groups of students who were identified by our Equity and Access subgroup as needing some additional support. So you'll hear more about that. And we also talked more about continuous learning and all of our students having the opportunity to participate in remote or distance learning using platforms such as Google Classroom and Canvas, as well as other online curricular platforms such as Ingenuity at the secondary level. So OSPI also gave us guidance on the expectations for us over the summer. What are some of those things that we needed to accomplish over the summer in order to be prepared for a start this fall? So there's a list of items that they have encouraged us to continue to focus on here. So that's why it says the focus of our summer work and that has continued to help facilitate our conversations, our work, our subgroups that are meeting out within our district. And to help ensure that we are prepared when our students join us again here in a couple of weeks. So I'm not going to read those all to you, but those were all recommended by the guidance from OSPI. So our Ferndale School District, we had summer work groups that have been functioning all summer long. And there's a number of those taking place that aren't even necessarily referenced here, but some of this work directly aligns with the, the tasks that were identified on the previous slide. So the reopening task force, that's one of those groups. And our overarching logistical goal was focused on creating our template. And we created facilitators to help with that work. And then we had an essentials learning standards group. So those groups have been identifying essential standards and developing scope and sequences at both the elementary and secondary level. So they've been looking at all the core, common core standards and identifying what are those that are priorities and then how are we going to pace those throughout the year to make sure all of our students in Ferndale have the opportunity to be exposed to a guaranteed and viable curriculum across the district. The other really valuable teams that have been functioning at both the elementary and secondary level, and it really started in the spring, but it's been continuing all summer long as we have leadership teams at both the elementary and secondary level. And we focus on a variety of topics, so professional development, technology, social emotional learning, our PBIS, diagnostic screeners, curriculum, scheduling, you name it. We are discussing it and having some really rich conversations. So all of our plans that we are coming up with are really heavily informed by these conversations, by this continued work and the collaboration that's taking place. Thanks, Fay.
All right, we're gonna start moving into looking at each of the subgroups in the reopening task force and learning more about the work that they did. When I introduce each of the groups, I would like your presenter to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and then proceed with your portion of the presentation. And I will transition us from subgroup to subgroup. So we're gonna go ahead and get started with the health and safety requirements. Sarah.
Hi, everyone. It's my great pleasure to be here and I really enjoyed working with the team over the summer. My name is Sarah Perry. I'm a pediatrician. I also have an MPH. I work generally in Sub-Saharan Africa, but I'm here in Watcom County now with my three little girls, one of whom is going into first grade in a few weeks. So we, as the Ferndale School District Health and Safety Group, were able to work really closely with local health officials, including Dr. Stern, Kimberly Hankinson, a public health nurse, and Lorette Rasmussen, an environmental health specialist at the Watcom County Health Department. Next slide, please. So obviously, as part of the health and safety plan, we need to focus on education and resource building. So we plan, and we have identified a need for trainings for all staff and students in the transmission of COVID-19, symptoms of COVID-19, procedures around symptomatic people within the schools, physical distancing and what that's going to mean in our context, the proper use of personal protective equipment within the schools, proper hand washing, including frequency, but also technique and disinfecting techniques, obviously only meant for staff. We are not going to expect students to do any of that. And then there's going to be a lot of big changes in school routines and changes in practices. And so for those, we plan to post signs, provide social media information for families, have in-person trainings and a lot of monitoring. Next slide, please. So a big piece is that we want to make sure no one that's sick ends up within our schools, right? So for our daily health screening, we have an app called Qualtrics, which is going to be sent out to everyone that may enter a school campus every morning. And the attestation will be completed for each individual student or staff member. All of these attestations will be uploaded into Skyward. At the school buildings themselves, there will be a visual inspection of everyone coming in. But if there's no attestation on file in Skyward, then we're also going to be able to do an onsite screening. All of this screening is going to be following Department of Health guidance. And obviously will require a great deal of education for staff and for families on the importance of accurate and timely reporting for it to work properly. Next slide, please. So obviously, if we're going to talk health and safety, we have to address face coverings. This is the single easiest and most important thing we can do to start, to talk about safely bringing people back into our schools. So as such, masks are going to be required for every student and staff and any other visitor to the school with very narrow exceptions following the Department of Health and LNI guidance. The school healthcare staff is going to follow the strict personal protective equipment, healthcare provider guidelines, you know, that come out with CDC and from the Health Department. And then staff and students will also be educated on the proper use, the storage, and the maintenance of the masks and other PPE. Of course, in the event that someone, you know, needs to come onto a school campus and they do not have a mask, the district has a limited supply of face coverings that they can offer. And obviously, a lot of written guidelines and signage will be created surrounding this issue. Next slide, please. So for physical distancing, we're going to follow the, the most, everyone agrees, six feet is the most safe way to proceed. So we're gonna try our best, knowing that this is going to be difficult, to maintain six feet between individuals during daily routines. And our group has done a ton of work going into every classroom and measuring the capacity of each classroom based on that distancing. Students will also be organized into cohort groups with minimal adults that are contacting each of those cohorts. So if someone were to get sick, there would only be a small group of people that would be exposed. Classroom and flow patterns are going to need to be created in a building-specific manner. That's okay. That's fine. Next slide, please. Hygiene, obviously, the minimum expectation is to wash and sanitize your hands regularly, but we're also all going to have to do our part to avoid touching our face or eyes, nose and mouth with wet hands. We're with our hands, sorry. And for employees, Ferndale School District has sent out information already to staff to try and help identify high-risk employees. They're following guidance from CDC, which considers anybody with an increased age at risk, anyone with underlying medical conditions or other high-risk medical conditions at risk. And at this point, they're just going to be following these up in a case-by-case manner. Next slide, please. So for health services, PPE will be provided for high-risk treatments, procedures, or when any employee exposure dictates a higher level of protection under LNI guidance. Anyone that's sick, a staff or a student that is identified at school will be isolated and sent home immediately. All well treatments or routine T medications or smaller injuries, hopefully, we can support most of those within the classroom. Some facilities are going to be able to create kind of a mobile medical cart that can come to the student rather than having the student come to the office. But for some, that's not going to be possible. So there will be an alternative health room for those injuries that will be separate from any COVID rooms. Next slide, please. If someone does have COVID symptoms on campus, there's a suspected case, we're notified of a positive case that we weren't, we didn't realize was pending, or there's a new exposure to a positive case at school, we're going to follow the Department of Health guidelines and the Watcom County Health Department protocols. They've been working really closely with our school nurse to really make these very clear flows. And, and I think we have a great plan in place. Obviously, this is going to require immediate isolation of that student or staff with the notification of their parent or guardian to pick them up immediately, realizing that sometimes immediately won't be immediately, but there will be a safe place to isolate them. And then refer the family to contact their primary healthcare provider. Notification of the staffer-student testing positive for COVID-19 will all happen through the Watcom County Health Department. And they're really going to help us in identifying and notifying close contacts, doing all that contact tracing, advising us on who to quarantine and for how long and to arrange testing for everyone. And then in the worst-case scenario to advise us if it needs, we need to have a school or at least a classroom. scenario, to advise us if it needs, we need to have a school or at least a class closure. Next slide, please. So for cleaning, sanitizing, and disinfecting, the cleaning practices are just going to be in accordance with the Department of Health, the Wacom County Health Department, and other regulating agencies for public schools. We've worked with the labor groups to define and update the cleaning, sanitizing, and disinfecting protocols. It will include, our new plan will include clear responsibilities for who's going to be doing all this new cleaning, identifying really the highest-risk areas within the schools, the high-touch points, et cetera, with daily schedule for cleaning those areas, training for all staff on proper cleaning and disinfecting of those areas, and then obviously providing proper PPE and training to everybody to ensure safety if they are using these harsh chemicals. Next slide, please. And for ventilation, they've also done a lot of work and work with neighboring school districts to really make sure that we have great ventilation in all of our classrooms. This includes increasing the amount of outside air during occupied times within the classrooms, but also operating the exhaust fans as much as possible, scheduling the HVAC occupied times earlier than normal to bring the fans on and introduce the outside air earlier, and then the HVAC unoccupied time later to flush the buildings more thoroughly, and then also encouraging open windows to increase outside air where it's possible. Thanks. Oh, that's it from us.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. At this point, we're going to hand it over to Paul Rosser to give us an update and information about the reopening recommendations for transportation.
Hello, my name is Paul Rosser, and I've been on deck for, since about February 2019, running transportation, and this has been, before COVID, it's been a great experience and have a wonderful, strong staff and a bunch of drivers really happy about that. And let me move on into what we're going to discuss for transportation. Before we go on the second slide, we're following requirements by CDC, Department of Health, LNI, and the Wacom County Health Department that we also consulted. But in Phase 2, we anticipate that we will transport a small number of students, and we expect our seating, our bus seating capacity to be no more than 50% at any time. During all of our transport, our bus windows are going to naturally remain down. Even on the cold days, we will still manage to put them down. Next slide, please. In all phases, this is what I'd like for you to focus in on. The AM pickup, home-to-school for students, we're going to load from rear to front with assigned, staggered, and alternating seating. Essentially, the bus driver will ensure they meet this requirement, and they will also record this. In the event that we got to do contract tracing, we don't have to pull everybody on the bus. We can look into a certain area of the bus and pull out who we need to identify, the students we need to. Also, with the assigned seating, it will make that year, the time that we're transporting students, simpler for us to manage that population. When we pick children up from school, they will load the bus and move to their assigned seating, and then as they are delivered, they will go from front of the bus to the rear of the bus. And essentially, what we're doing is just controlling all the children on the bus. If you ever watch a video of a regular bus ride, sometimes the students like to move around and stuff, and so with this right here, the assigned seating, we think that will mitigate COVID exposure. Next slide. We already have this in place down at the bus garage from spring quarter. We're using a cleaning substance called S-730 HP Hydrogen Peroxide Disinfectant Cleaner. After each bus run, we spray on the high-wear areas of the bus, the handrails, et cetera, and then we let that disinfectant work, and then the drivers wipe it off. And then during all transportations, we mentioned windows will be down so that we have fresh air going through the buses, and on cold days, students will have to dress appropriately. Naturally, all students and drivers are required to wear a mask, and that's a non-negotiable. And that concludes my section of the brief.
Rebecca, you're muted.
Sorry. Thank you, Paul. We're going to have our Director of Food Services give us an update on the recommendations. So Holly Graham, it's your turn.
Hi, my name is Holly Graham, and I'm the Director of Accounting and Child Nutrition, and our food service requirements are governed by the CDC, the Department of Health, Department of Labor and Industries, and the Wacom County Health Department. I'll start with, we've made plans for all three different models, learning models. So the first one that I'll start with is the remote learning model, since that's what we're starting the school year off in. Meals will be provided to students in a 10-meal box. I'm sorry, next slide, please. Meals will be provided to students in a 10-meal box that includes five breakfasts and five lunches, and they'll be available for pickup at every school. Families will be able to place their order for food boxes on the web, school website, or by email, or by phone. Families with multiple students in different schools will be able, oh, previous slide, please, will be able to pick up their food at one location, and the food distribution will be on Wednesday mornings from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and Wednesday evenings from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., or we are happy to make other arrangements if Wednesdays don't work for people, so they can make an appointment to pick it up another time. And the reason we landed on Wednesdays is because to keep some consistency, the first day of school is on Wednesday, and we'll be providing a meal box that day. And also, we're going to be providing some scratch-cook meals in the boxes and fresh fruits and vegetables that we'll be preparing on Monday and Tuesday. So we just kind of landed on Wednesday as a good day to have our distribution, and social distancing and masking guidelines will be followed at all the distribution sites. Next slide, please. Their next is our in-person learning model. Students will eat grab-and-go meals with everything wrapped or prepackaged in their classroom in their designated physically-distanced space. And the reason we're not having meals in the cafeteria is they can't wear a mask while they're eating, and our cafeterias are very crowded. So we thought that eating in their classrooms is the best way to keep them isolated and kind of in their own cohort. Breakfast will be available for all students, and they could stop by the cafeteria to pick it up on their way to class. For elementary schools, lunch will be delivered to the classroom, and for secondary students, a schedule will be developed for students to go to the cafeteria at their designated lunchtime and pick up their meal, and then return to their classroom to eat their lunch. And the cafeterias in the secondary schools will have designated service lines with the social distancing requirement of six feet. Next slide, please. And for the hybrid model, the AABB schedule, for the days that the students are on campus, we'll use the in-person model that I just presented on the previous slide, and meals for the remote learning days, which are three days a week, they'll be available for pickup on designated times, days and times, with morning and evening pickup available. And that wraps up food service.
All right. Thank you very much, Holly. We are going to move on to look at the statutory requirements for reopening school and running education, and Michelle, take it away.
Thank you, Rebecca. Hello, my name is Michelle Stern. I am a teacher in the Ferndale School District, specifically Ferndale High School, English and CTE. I am also now a resident and homeowner in Ferndale, so I'm doubly invested in this. And I do want to thank the group that, with whom I worked, they were fabulous and insightful and supportive, and a special shout-out to Fay and Kelly for handling this Herculean task with so much grace and dedication. I've worked with them a lot this summer, and I am just, I am just in awe of them, so they're fabulous. So I will be walking us through some pretty detail-heavy, heavy sections here because they do cover, as Rebecca said, the statutory requirements, the things that were mentioned in the front of the PowerPoint, the instructional days, attendance assessment, learning standards, and grading are all embedded within some part of this section here. So to start off with, we are going to follow the calendar that we constructed last year, the 180 instructional days, and you can see they required 1,027 hours. We are going to school this fall. It is, is not what we did in the spring, which was a ton of work. I was part of that, and it was a lot of work, and it was a huge task, but this is online school, so we have a calendar, and we're going to be taking attendance, as you can see, at the elementary level, daily attendance. At the secondary level, we're going to be taking attendance every period, every day. So students will come in being accountable, and right away, we're going to set it up. This is a real day. This is not just a fill-in. This is online school. It says here we have content teams and grade-level teams that have been helping us determine essential standards and scopes and sequencing, but I'm going to say this is not a new thing. This is something that we always are working on. So this is just going to continue again seamlessly into our online or distancing education. And the last one is, again, this is school, so we are returning to our traditional grading policies and practices, and that goes back to posting grades into Skyward and things so students are graded accurately, authentically from their assessments and their assignment. Next slide, please. I'm following along in my PowerPoint because some of, you'll see some of the stuff is kind of tiny, and I want to make sure I cover it properly. So for us, we're going to have a typical weekly schedule, and a little bit further on, you'll see how the elementary, middle, and high school kind of differentiate, but there's something we have in common in that we have daily instruction and social and emotional connections using Zoom. That's going to be our, our, our connection with our kids, our FaceTime with our kids. So we're going to do a variety of things from direct instruction, also teacher-directed led interventions and extensions, again, small group driven by students to meet the needs of the students. That will again be supportive of small group work and independent support. We're just going to do everything that we did in the classroom, right? We're just going to transition to do it through Zoom and support our kids the best way we know how. So we want to kind of put this into a space where you can all think of how we're going to do this. And Canvas is something that we started using, a lot of us have been using for years. Some of us, like myself, just started using it in the spring, and that is going to be our classroom. So our middle school, high school kids are using Canvas. They're going to meet there, meet there, and then they're going to be, you know, given instruction by their individual teacher. And then Google Classroom is going to be something used in the elementary, and they have been using it as well since the spring. So we are, I would say, well-versed in those classrooms, and those two are considered our LMS, or Learning Management Systems. Now, within that, we're going to have our classes, but we also need resources. And you can see there's a variety of resources that we're using, and I'm going to give you a very quick rundown of the five that are listed there, and if you have any questions, please ask, and I will probably refer some of those to Kelly or Fay if it's out of my knowledge, but I'm going to do, I think I'm going to do okay. So Ingenuity, that's going to service the 612, and that's going to be our online content. Now, Ingenuity has been at the high school for credit retrieval, but that was a tip of the iceberg. It is a gigantic online, very credible, and let me look at my notes here, I did my homework, very credible online resource. They have rigorous interactive courses, they're student-focused, and again, everything from world language to AP to CTE, everything's on there, and it's designed to be online. So we are going to be able to facilitate that, and kids will be able to use it seamlessly as they log into then campus first. Now, Accelerated Ed is a K2, and that, think of it as the younger brother or sister of Ingenuity, so it is basically one scope and sequence, it's just called something else, and they're going to have their own content with the same support and rigor and interactive selection in courses, but that's the K2 part of it. Then moving on to Achieve 3000, that is another program that has been used already in the elementary. So again, teachers are well-versed with this, but this Achieve 3000 is literacy instruction, has embedded assessment, and it also supports social studies and science, and it's designed to deepen literacy, it's got frameworks and teacher-facilitated learning, and it allows synthesis with students, so it's a really solid textbook, as they call it. Last, now, second to last is the Khan Academy, and that is specifically math, standard for grade, for grades three through five, and the strength there is they do have personalized learning, and students can learn at their own pace, and again, standard-aligned, standard-based-aligned assessment and practice and lessons, so everything that you want in your statutory educational requirements. And then iReady is going to take the place of Math. I did Math once back in the day when I was at Vista, and it is an online assessment, and this is going to support K8 specifically for proficiency in reading and math. So those are assessment pieces there that teachers can use, pinpoint student strengths, looks for skill sets where there are some pockets where they can then turn around and do that small group or independent work, or extension or intervention to help support those kids. So I would like to stop, however, and ask if there are any questions at this point. That's a lot of information. Okay, lovely. Next slide, please.
Oh, no, I had a question.
I can't see, I'm sorry, Melinda, I shut my, my little side thing there. Here we go. I'll expand it. Hi.
So, so you had said that the online instructional resources, think of those as textbooks. Does that mean that kids won't have traditional textbooks like they had before?
So I can only, and I, please Fay and Kelly jump in, but if we are going to be online, I believe all of the resources then will be online. So kids will log in to Canvas or Google Classroom, and then we, so I'm just high school, we're going to be using Ingenuity. I will have my classes listed, and they'll be connected to Ingenuity, or I can assign them lessons or writing prompts or homework, and that's going to be considered their textbook, but it's a fully functioning online resource.
And they'll have access to that throughout, you know, 24/7, whenever they need to go and do their homework or whatever.
Yeah, that's a nice thing about it. You'll see with the scheduling that we've got synchronous and asynchronous time for students. So once we do that direct instruction, that Zoom meeting in the morning, kids can go to Ingenuity or Accelerate or Achieve and work on the assignments, and then come back, and we can have open classroom time to help answer questions or work with students. And again, the flexibility too is, you know, if you've got kids all over the place, kindergarten, first grade, high school, and they've got that minimal bandwidth, they might be able to stagger their instruction time and then stagger their work time, you know, can get their work done.
Michelle, I would just interject just briefly for the elementary level. There will be some corresponding workbooks that students will have access to that supports the Accelerate Ed at the primary levels, but we'll be sending those home for them.
Yep, and that's why I tell Kelly to run on an elementary teacher. I'm writing a workbook.
So Michelle, I also have a question. This is Andrew.
Hello.
Hi. So maybe this comes later, but, but if we're thinking textbook, what about our kids who don't have access to internet, who won't have Google Classroom?
Well, we are addressing that the goal is for students to have devices, K-12, all devices, and the way that hopefully will be handled is that there will be 700 devices that have been purchased and hopefully will be delivered, like we're not the only game in town that wants laptops, and will be delivered by the time school starts, and then through the survey that was sent out, at this point, over 835 families will opt out of using a school device, that's another 800 that can hopefully be put out, and that will increase our chances of having the K-12 devices for all students.
Andrew, there is a section of this report on technology as well.
Okay, great. Yeah.
I think there is. Yeah. But, but you did fabulously. Michelle, thank you.
Okay, on next slide, please. So this is the schedule that I was alluding to before, and you'll see three of them, and I want to bring out the word draft. This, it's a foundational, at this point, it's sound, it makes sense, but online school is a new beast, and I would like for this to be considerably more fluid, so we can change and adjust slightly to meet the needs of our students, right? That's always our first concern. So if you can see that the kindergarten first and second, and the third, fourth, and fifth, both start and end with class meeting time, and that's really important, that time to connect, that homeroom time, they can check in, it's time when they can do social and emotional learning, it's the face they see in the morning, the face they see at the end of the day, which is super comforting and provides consistency like a tradition- It's the face they see in the morning, the face they see at the end of the day, um, which is super comforting and provide consistency like a, a traditional school day. And then throughout, they will lead themselves through literary, uh, literacy instruction. Um, small group, individual group, there's a lunch and recess built in like a traditional day. Um, then we have specialists who can come in, it's going to be live or recorded based on need. Math instruction, recess break again like a traditional day. And then the very young ones end with social studies, science or art. And then that iReady, which is uh, what I mentioned before, which is the math or um, literacy assessment instruction piece. And ending again, checking in, talking to the students, see how they're doing. And of course review, this is all good teaching, this is stuff we do anyway, we're just transitioning to a Zoom meeting instead. And then same with third, fourth and fifth. I don't need to read that through, it's very similar, except of course it'll be adjusted to the older students. But the same thing, consistency, scheduling, breaking, um, meeting with their kids, beginning and end again, consistency. Real class day and time built in to meet with them if they need um, any more FaceTime or small group or individual support. Okay, um, middle school, I'm going to open up mine because that's very tiny. And middle school's a little bit different, um, it's closer to what the high school looks like. But if you can see, the big thing here is in the morning, it starts off with parent or guardian contact time, which is really important. It's a set schedule and parents know they can reach out to teachers or guardians can reach out to teachers. And um, talk to us, right? Check in about their kids, um, tell us what they need, tell us how they're doing. Um, it's really important, you know, especially for the, the newer students coming in who've not been in middle school. And so that's a time to support parents and guardians. And then equally important, you start with advisory. So I think a, a nice way to consider advisory, it's your classroom, like your homeroom, period. Every day you check in and again, it's that social emotional connection time, it's that FaceTime, how are you doing? What's going on, this is going to, what's your day going to be like, a little check in. I know I was, let me with my advisory class. See how the weekends are, what they're doing, how they're feeling, really important to student engagement is going to be more challenging right through this. So we have to have those purposeful pieces put in there and advisory is a great time for that. Now the day is structured that Mondays and Thursdays are periods one, two, three. And Tuesdays and Fridays are four, five, six. And that way we see our kids twice a week, um, again, they have a schedule. And it starts off with uh, direct synchronous mandatory instruction. And I think Melinda's what you were talking about, like there's instruction in the morning and then they have time in the afternoon to do what those, those lessons that they were, they were taught in the morning. Um, a lunch break again. And then the afternoon is unique because that's kind of like a, a catchall. It's really going to be based on student need. And under that teacher time there, there is so many things that we can use the afternoon for. Whether it's student support, again, more um, student and um, engagement pieces, things to tidy up and adjust. Um, to open up your classroom, to help students do their homework. It's really has so many, I mean, you could put a hundred bullets under there. And those are just some of the ideas how the teachers are going to use that time in the afternoon. And in the Wednesday, and this is very similar to the high school. We have um, their, their second step, which is their social emotional learning time and their coursework and drop in Zooms. And uh, I'm sure it will progress and morph again to meet student needs. Oh, and of course, uh, Wednesday afternoon, we have PLC time, which is our professional learning community time, which is really important for us. Sorry Rebecca, thank you. And then the high school. This is my day, um, again, very similar to the middle school. Um, we are going to start with some time in the morning, it's called the special services optional time. And this is where our kids can meet with our behavior specialists and check in. Um, even though I was made aware that they are available now, they've been available pretty much all summer to help kids out. They, they've worked tirelessly to connect with kids who are at risk. And then we have our targeted instruction time, which is going to be our mandatory Zoom. Um, and then you see our periods go from one, two, three. And so it's kind of hard to see this, but we are going to only cover, is that one, two, three for, Jeremy, are you in here?
Michelle, you can ask me.
Okay, so we're doing one, two, three the entire quarter, correct?
One, two.
We see our kids every day. Oh, fourth and, I'm sorry, so.
Put off the page.
Yeah, that's why I think what it is, it's really tiny, I couldn't read this. Um, we're going to see our kids, same kids, periods one, two, three, four, think of it as a blue day. Um, every day, or uh, three days or four days a week, excuse me. And it's really nice, the consistency. And we will split our day with synchronous versus asynchronous instruction. Again, very similar to the middle school, time embedded for um, connecting with our kids, direct instruction, um, lessons, whatever they need. We will be taking attendance. And we also have that Wednesday built in for us to connect our high schoolers to some clubs and activities. That they're no longer physically able to meet, we can build that into that day and create and keep a sense of community, which is really key for our students right now. Not to lose that sense of community that we are, are adult school district students. Okay, next please. Uh, here we go, so over uh, in the spring, there were um, some students who did not complete their course.
I think Melinda had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Um, so with the seeing the blue day for the whole quarter, the yellow days for the next quarter. For classes that are year long, like say, English or math or foreign language or something like that, will they be taught in consecutive quarters?
Yes.
Because like my son's in Spanish, if he has it cool one and three, that seems weird, so would he be like two?
They will be, I believe they'll be taught consecutively, so you won't lose any, have any downtime. And I know there was a concern with AP classes as well because the assessment is in the spring. And uh, there are and there will be available if their AP class was the first semester, because it's a year long, or I'm sorry, yes. It's a semester class for those types. There are fabulous resources that are online, students can refresh all second semester and connect with lessons. So they're not going to have like any downtime before their AP exams.
Okay, but they would have to be taking. Taking all those AP classes than the first semester?
No, they're going to stagger them because that would be an unreal um, schedule to have all those AP classes. I'm just saying if it happens that there's some of their AP classes are first semester, there will be resources available second semester to keep that information fresh to them. So they won't be at a deficit when they take their AP exams in the spring.
Okay.
So I have a question. Um, I noticed, so we, we went to four classes at the high school at a time because that's plenty to keep track of versus eight. But I see in the middle school, you're still at six classes. And I just wonder what the thought process is um, to keep the middle school at six classes.
I was not on that calendar committee, so I don't wish.
Everybody's frozen, you might not have heard me.
Oh, so Leanne, I can answer that.
Thank you.
So one of the reasons that we went to um, three and three was because when we phase in, the way that the schedule is at the middle school, we have six period days. So then when we phase in, it'll make that transition so much smoother and easier. Because it's set up that way so that we're still going by a six period format, even though we're breaking it down into three by three, if that makes any sense. That's why we couldn't go to four and four or two and two, because our schedule at the middle school is set up to a six period day.
And the high school's at a block schedule, so that, we'll keep that consistent too when we go back.
I, I would also um, add. Leanne, I think, I know you know this, but the schedule at the high school is more expensive to run. It's one of the things that we've done is have that eight period schedule. When we tried to look at even reducing to five periods at the middle school, it made either huge classes because we don't have funding, extra funding now. To um, add staff. It's complicated, but the, the high school schedule is more expensive and if we're staffed for that, we're not at the middle school. And to reduce would have made classes of thirty eight and forty.
That's correct.
If we tried to have kids in five. It's a number two.
Yeah, it would have created some additional logistical challenges.
So instead, our middle school teachers are going to be very cognizant of workload and meeting with kids um, every other day. And so kids won't be trying to do six things at once.
Plus, I'd like to add that teachers have been working on condensing and getting to these essential learnings and essential standards. And that's how we are able to continue to provide, you know, rigorous and quality educations. Because we have really worked, you know, what, what is essential to know. And that is something we've been working on tirelessly, I would, for years. But it really, it shows in these, in these um, lessons and these schedules because we have to jump right in there and get this stuff going. You know, we, we know where students need to be and they will be there, um, because we understand the scope and sequence of the situation. I apologize if I, if I, I've been minimizing my speaking screen, so I apologize if I don't see you because I want to see the PowerPoint so I don't miss anything. So thank you for letting me know that I'm, I'm not ignoring anyone on purpose, I promise. So this is my last slide and it's really quick. Um, yes, some students were not able to complete their work in the spring, there were many difficulties. But we have identified them, we are working with the counselors and the administrators. And um, we're devising a plan and they will be um, working on that and being supportive of the counselors. So they can receive a grade and get credit for those classes in the fall. Additionally, high schoolers were offered uh, math and English credits, right? High school graduation requirement, keep them on track, they had that this summer as well. And I did mention previously that um, there are seven hundred, wow, this is not my slide, but I've got this. That there's seven hundred additional devices. Plus the eight hundred from the students who walked out. Thank you, are you, are you testing me Rebecca?
Do it.
The goal is um, really truly to have every student um, be connected. And I, I have every, every faith that this is going to happen. Um, teachers have been working, I can testify, um, in the summer on different committees from, again, task force to, from um, learning plans to all of it. We are fully invested in trying to get and getting our students the best educational opportunities this fall. Um, to do that, we have a plethora of uh, PD opportunities. I'm signed up for a bunch because all of this new, I have not used Ingenuity before. Um, I need to strengthen my Canvas um, abilities. So they're all, they've all been very purposefully and thoughtfully embedded in our end of summer. So I have that to look forward to before school starts. And you've already heard that our classroom management learning systems are for the elementary, Google Classroom and Canvas for the secondary. And that's it for mine.
All right, thank you so much, Michelle, that was a lot of work that's gone into um, all the things that need to be considered for our scheduling and our instruction for our students. As we prepare to reopen in a distance learning model. Um, I am Rebecca Champagne and I am the Director of Special Education Services. And I had a great team of people to work on the equity and access considerations for the reopening plan. And we were really looking at um, how do we intentionally think about and remove barriers for students? That have, that need additional planning to make sure that they can access their instruction and benefit from their education. And so um, we really needed to think through all the recommendations from our, the statutory requirements and from our health and safety recommendations as we made this plan. So a huge shout out to the folks that were on the Equity and Access Team. And we had a lot of our administrators, we had um, Leanne from the School Board and an amazing group of community members um, that joined us as well. Next slide please. All right, um, so our, our concerns were those barriers that exist for our students. And we first started thinking about really what would that look like with the um, the A A B B schedule? Because we all anticipated that we thought we'd be able to come to school at least part time. But that shifted for us pretty drastically at the beginning of August and we really needed to start thinking about um, the distance learning. And then how do we start phasing kids back in when it is deemed a safe and appropriate? So based on the safety expectations and health expectations from the Department of, the local Department of Health and Labor and Industries. We're going to face students into in-person learning by invitation. And we were asked by OSPI to um, make a list and almost rank order our priorities. And our group worked this a lot, um, lots of conversation, lots of dialogue. And um, what we came to was we're going to identify those students with complex um, IEPs and being served through special education. And then next, students with complex five oh four plans under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And those are students with disabilities but may need some additional planning, but not necessarily individualized instruction through an IEP. Um, and then students, again, with limited or no access to wifi. And you'll see that um, what you heard from Michelle previously is that the district has done a lot of work to purchase more devices, reallocate devices. And work with some of our local um, service providers for phone, um, internet and um, to provide individualized support to our families and um, resources. And so we're going to be reaching out to those families that have indicated the need for support. So this will be additional planning for kids that still have that barrier even after all those resources have been deployed. Um, students who are English language learners, level one or two on the Washington English Language Proficiency Assessment. Students who are migrant and then students experiencing homelessness are the populations that we will target for inviting to um, in-person learning first. Once we are able to do that safely, given our guidelines. Next slide please, thank you. And then when safety permits, we're going to face students into in-person learning and we're going to use this. Um, we're going to use data and evidence to indicate that the student is struggling to make progress in specific areas. We're going to go through a process of identifying barriers to successful participation and work with the family and the student to work on mitigating all those barriers. And when barriers remain, we're going to determine if a student is able to adhere to the current health and safety guidelines. And currently, that's wearing a mask, um, the six foot social distancing um, requirements that we have. And, and appropriate PPE and hand washing, all those things that we learned about earlier. And then we'll discuss in-person programming and services. And that could be part or all of the areas that are provided in service or in, in-person services. Um, based on the data and the planning that goes into each individual student. Any questions so far, that's a lot. No questions, excellent. All right, um, so we know that students have lots of barriers that exist under normal circumstances. But under the situation with um, COVID nineteen, there's, these barriers seem a lot bigger. Um, and so we want to make sure that we are considering the needs of each of our students. And looking at those students who may fall into multiple categories and may have more significant barriers that need to be um, addressed. So here's an example, names and grade levels have been blacked out so that um, we can protect um, student information. But we have a plan to um, run reports in Skyward, our student information system, to identify students that fall into the multiple categories that were identified. Um, to bring back in as soon as we are able to. And those are students that are ELL, um, special ed. Um, homeless that participate in Title One services, so intervention services for struggling learners. Five oh four plans and the INTER is the students that didn't have access to internet or the technology um, to access remote learning in the spring. So this gives us a way to um, track students and identify students that need additional planning and resources. And help obviously look first to mitigate those barriers so that they can participate successfully in the remote instruction. But if they're not able to make sure that we have them on our radar to get them in as soon as we are able to do that safely. All right, next slide please. After the individual and small groups are brought back and we're able to um, phase in cohorts of students, we've prioritized our early learners. That's our preschool through first grade. Um, and then additionally, our sixth grade students that are in a, in a big transition year between middle school and high school. Our ninth graders that are in another big transition year between, or sorry, elementary and middle school. And then our ninth graders that are in a big transition year between middle and high school. And then also we have added our seniors who are at risk of not graduating. And those would be those that are struggling to make progress in remote learning. And we've done, gone through the process of brainstorming, problem solving, and we're still having challenges. And we've done, gone through the process of brainstorming, problem solving, and we're still having challenges supporting them, making it to graduation. And so we'll look at, at bringing those students back as well, as soon as we are able to bring small groups back in. Next slide, please. All right. Thank you very much. Is there any questions about equity and access?
I have a question Rebecca.
Yes.
So all of that phasing in and the order in which you would phase in different students, that is all before we get to the AABB, correct?
That would be correct. Yep.
And so for those, sorry, go ahead. I have a question, but.
Yeah. The Health Department has said that when it is safe to start bringing in small groups of students, that we can bring in individual students and small groups, um, you know, up to five to 10, depending on what phase we're in and how things are looking in the county. And they'll, they'll be giving us guidance on that. When we get into the AABB schedule, it's, um, it's once we're a little bit further along and it's okay to have larger cohorts of kids. And we'll have roughly half of the student population in the building at a time.
Melinda, I would say that we will not have, the, the part of what Rebecca talked about, about bringing in all the ninth graders or the sixth graders or the K ones, that's not going to happen when we can only have small groups of five. That, but, but when we get, that'll more likely be at the hybrid point, we'll try to give those kids more time in school. You know.
I'm just kind of thinking like, if we have the teachers who are working, you know, on the online only at the beginning. And then we have more and more students coming into the school, where are those teachers coming from?
That's, we're working all that out now.
Yeah, the HR that, and teaching and learning is working on a plan for how do we schedule kids that are planning to be in person when we're able to, once we get to that hybrid model of the AABB. Or that the students that plan and are wanting to be remote all year. So, um, we're creating classes and making recommendations based on, on parent input.
I understand like the, um, you know, those that are going to want, that want hybrid when it's available, that they'll be in a class together. So when that whole, when AABB happens, that whole class can move together in it. My question is more, if in that class of say 15 students, you had four that were going to be phased in beforehand, and I don't know if my numbers are totally out of whack or if that's.
Melinda, that's where. That's where we're going to use, that's where we're going to use our, um, our specialist and support specialists who work in lab title. Special education, migrant, you know, those, we have support people who work in those. And so instead of providing extra support in a, in the class to the classroom teachers, they will work with those students individually. We're working out the details of that now.
So, but those, those specialists would be working on the full distance model when we're all full distance and then when we.
Yeah. Yes. They'll be providing support in the, you know, in some of those times that aren't scheduled with the classroom teacher. It's very similar to what, what we do if we were in person.
Yes. And then Andrew, you had a question?
Yeah, just going back to, and I'm, I'm impressed with all the work that has been done, but we know we're going to have kids who aren't going to have access to the internet. They're not going to have a way to log on. What are we doing for them while everyone else is on Edgenuity or the other programs? What, what, what will we be providing for those students who don't have an access?
Andrew, we're working, we're planning on having a fully remote. So some of those students may have to be brought to a location where they can get on internet.
Okay.
I think both Rebecca mentioned some things about that and so did Michelle. We are doing everything in our power to eliminate as many of those as possible, but we know we're not going to get to zero. And so we are going to have to have locations where kids can come and be on internet.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks.
But they're still going to be learning remotely. So in a way, it's not exactly the phased in that Rebecca's talking about.
Right, right.
Remote learning, but not in my house.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for that clarification.
You bet. All right. Um, I am going to pass this over to our next subgroup for the social emotional learning to Patty.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Patty Hozels, uh, elementary school counselor in the school district and resident and parent to an incoming senior and seventh grader. So on my parent hat and my community hat and my school district hat, I know everyone's been working really hard. So thank you. We had a wonderful group of staff and we were lucky enough on our subgroup to have two high school students with us. And it's always amazing to me. I love having student voice and I know you have some student representatives on your board, but sometimes as adults think we know how to support students and then they get to share their experience and how they felt supported, especially during the springtime. They shared what really worked for them and what didn't work. And so that really was able to inform some of our recommendations. That was really valuable. I just want to say, um, around social emotional learning that we know that relationships matter and as we're practicing physical distancing, it doesn't mean that we have to lose social and school connections. And we know that one of the biggest predictors of academic outcomes is a sense of belonging in the school. So our task is how do we do that while we're not physically in a building and having face-to-face conversations? So that is where some of our recommendations, um, come in for how we are going to move forward. So next slide, please. So one of the requirements from OSPI is that we do have a universal screener. And what that means is, um, a tool that we can use that will identify students. Not only their strengths and their learning needs and their social emotional needs, but how do we identify them and some risk factors? So students, um, that might need differentiated support, extra support. How do we identify those early so that we can start adding in supports for them? Or perhaps changing their plan during distance learning. Uh, it's our recommendation and it's actually best practice to administer screeners like that about four to six, eight or four to six weeks into the school year so that our staff learn about the students before rating their skills essentially. But also we want family and students to get used to the new model of distance learning as we're suggesting it's happening and how it will be different in the spring. So they can also give us feedback on that as well. Um, another recommendation is to have a little bit of a slow start at the beginning to build community and prepare for academic work. So in the typical, when we're in person, we are building connections and we're getting to know our students. And when we're virtual, we're going to have to do that in a little bit of a different way. Because we're not in hallways and we're not passing our students and students aren't meeting each other in the hallway. So we're going to have to build in some extra time for them to feel that sense of belonging and trust with their teacher and with each other. So during this time, there will be, um, we're recommending some individual contacts, potentially some family meetings. Where typically this doesn't happen until an open house setting or a conference setting. We're hoping that some more times like that can happen at the very beginning so we can address barriers. We can find out more about the family and the students ahead of time so that none of those barriers go very long without being addressed. Um, at this time, we can also train all of our students and families in the necessary technology that they need. And then what I was just talking about is having engaging Zoom meetings and teaching our social emotional learning curriculum during this time. So that we know that they are being supported as a whole group. Um, the great thing about Ferndale is that we have been prioritizing social emotional learning for the, um, for a bit actually. And so we have a full curriculum that's already available and we're teaching that to all of our students in K through 12th grade. And so all of that is already existing. We don't have to create that new and we get to just start that at the beginning of the school year. Oops, can you go back just one more? I have one more point on that side. Thank you. Um, it was our teams, uh, we talked about the need to have, um, we didn't want to call it a survey because we don't want to over survey, but almost a tool for teachers to get to know their families and their students, like a back to school questionnaire where staff can ask some questions to understand how students learn best. Um, any concerns they have about the upcoming school year and then some basic relationship gathering conversation. So we call this the back to school questionnaire that would start at the beginning, that would screen out some potential risk factors and barriers. And then that would follow up with a more official, um, universal screener that would happen later in the school year. So because we're doing school a little bit differently, we're going to need some different points of feedback and contact with our student. Okay, next slide. Thanks. Here are just a few extra suggestions is student communication. This was kind of a big point. We were all scrambling. We wanted everyone to feel supported and we didn't want anyone to fall through the cracks in the spring. And so thinking about a communication log where families, not that context is going to be limited, but it's just going to be a little bit less and a little bit more streamlined than maybe it was in the spring. And ensuring that student contact is being made. Uh, one of our high schoolers talked about if she missed a Zoom call, that she knew she was going to receive a phone call from her teacher and how valued and loved that made her feel. And we really want all of our students to feel as though if they missed one of their class meetings that they are missed and cared for and worried about. And then the other thing is just increased phone support in small group. Uh, we had actually a parent support program running in the spring by our school counselors that involved some open office hours where we could support them in supporting their students' learning. Uh, and we had some small groups running that provided not only social emotional support to our students, but we also know that our families are struggling with some social emotional and coping skills as well. So we want to support all of that. And the final thing, which is probably what I should have started with, um, is that the impact of this pandemic and the stressors, societal pressures, financial, local things that are going on in our community is having a big impact on our overall functioning. And not only on our students, but on our staff and families as well. So we really want to increase staff and student training on what the impact of that stress is on our bodies, on our learning, on our wellness and to increase the teaching of coping skills to address those stressors. And so increase student lessons. And then we'd really love this to be at the forefront of staff conversations as well. Because staff are working extremely hard, our administrators are working extremely hard, as all of you know, I'm preaching to the choir. And we really, really want to make sure that, um, they are balancing their own physical and emotional wellness during this time. And that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, Patty, thank you so much. And thank you to your team for all the work on looking at the social emotional learning needs of our students and recommendations for our staff and our programming. Our next group is our communications group and Rav Dylan.
All right, hang in there. We're almost there. I know we've all had long days. Good evening. My name is Rav Dylan and I, and I'm the Assistant Principal at Ferndale High School. So welcome. Um, so I am a part of the communication team. And on that team, uh, we had, uh, Dr. Quinn, we had, uh, Erin Vincent, myself, Anna Carlson, who is a parent in our community and, uh, Mr. Vicente, who is our Latino advisor at Ferndale High School. So, um, in our group, we had, um, these areas that we really wanted to focus on, make sure that we communicate any recommendations that the task force sets forward, as well as providing resources for the families. Uh, the latest news in the district, you know, almost week to week updates provided to staff, uh, our community as far as what the plan, uh, is going to look like in the fall. And then of course, once, uh, the decision was made that we were going to be, uh, going remote, uh, was to send out the survey, which I will talk about more and, uh, finding out exactly what our, our families needed. Can you, the page, thank you. Great. So, uh, we looked into as many different platforms as we possibly could to communicate to all our important stakeholders, um, including on, uh, including working on our current school district, uh, website that needs to be updated with more information with now, um, dealing with this pandemic and having, uh, resources available, um, and as well as what, um, the schedules are going to look like at each of the buildings like, um, Michelle went through. So that is work in progress. I know, uh, Kelly has been working, Kelly Warner has been working on revamping our district page. So thank you for all your hard work. And, uh, we will have a new look very shortly, like I said, with all the important resources available. Erin has been doing a great job of just reaching out to our community via social media. If you haven't had the opportunity, every Thursday for the last, uh, three weeks now. Every Thursday at four o'clock, uh, she has been hosting a live weekly Facebook program and our administrators are available during that time to answer questions and community members can, um, come with their questions and we will the best we can to, uh, address their questions, but making sure that our community, um, feels, uh, heard. And at the same time, it's great to know what some of their concerns and questions are so that we can address them. We, uh, for the first time, let me just rewind back, back a bit here. The, the other piece that we've, um, taken more on is just reaching out to our non-speaking, um, non-speaking English families. So I can say, for example, when we have those updates from the district that, uh, I have been sending out robocalls in Punjabi to our, uh, Punjabi families. And I know, um, David and I think Kelly as well as Alvaro have been sending out those robocalls so that our non-English speaking families feel like they, uh, can understand someone. They may not be comfortable with English. More importantly, um, when we leave a robocall, that, uh, we leave our contact information so that they can reach us directly. And it's been, I can't tell you, so many families have called me and, uh, have questions and, uh, feel quite connected when they have somebody in our district that can speak, uh, their language. So that brought us, just knowing the need of our community, we thought, uh, why can't, why don't we create a, uh, team? And so David had created kind of this equity team that, uh, we joined and decided, well, you know, Erin's doing such a great job with these pop-up live meetings. What if we were to do something very similar like that for our non-speaking, um, English families? So we are going to be pushing out our first, um, Punjabi and, uh, Russian pop-up Zoom meeting tomorrow. So we already sent out the invitation to our families and provided the link so that they tomorrow at, uh, 6:00 PM for the Russian community. And then 7:00 PM for the Punjabi community to log in, just like we all are now. And, um, they can ask their questions in Punjabi. Uh, Dr. Quinn will be there, our administrators from each of the buildings will be there to answer any of their questions. And they can speak in their language. So, um, and then the plan for the Latino speaking families on Thursday in the evening as well. And if you, anybody would like to join, you're more than welcome to. Erin will definitely send you that link so you can be a part of, of that, um, meeting. So that's the pop-up meetings. We are also sending out regular emails to, um, our staff as well as our community. And we're trying to be transparent as, as, as much as possible. And then like I said, having those all call systems going out via Skyward as well as, um, the robocalls that we do at the district office. Any questions here? Okay.
I have a question real quick.
Yes.
Rav, you said for the pop-up meetings for the families that speak other languages, they're getting direct invitations?
Yes. Yes. So what, what we did was, Melinda, um, we had Patty Belloria at the district office, who's our, kind of our Skyward guru. Uh, we had her filter, um, through. We had her filter through, and she filtered all the Punjabi speaking families because you have all that data in your system. So I had asked her, could you please pull out all the people, all the students and families that speak Punjabi? And she created a file, and she was able to just push out the Punjabi translation to those families. And it was interesting because I had one person who emailed back and said, and I guess she's in the same situation as me, she can speak the language, but she can't read and write it. So she said, I'd love to be a part of the meeting, but could you send this version to me in English? And then on Monday, I had Erin send it out in Punjabi and English. And so, and a lot of, a few families called me yesterday and said, you know what? I, I can't be at that Zoom meeting. But they asked me questions on the phone, and they just, they were very appreciative. And they really appreciated that, you know, their voices are being heard and just wanting to know what kind of support is available for them.
And I assume those meetings will be recorded and posted to like board meetings are, or our Facebook lives have been?
Erin can answer that question.
We assume, we, if, if the technology works, that is our plan. Yep.
It's always the technology, yeah.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's the plan.
And I also want to say, Melinda and everyone else, is that, you know, this is not something that we want to just do at the beginning. And this is, when we met in our group, our equity group, we, we felt it was very important that we do these once a month. You know, whatever, we continue to do this periodically throughout the year so that our families do feel supported and know that, you know, there's someone that's out there that they can reach to, reach out to with their concerns. So not just at the beginning of the school year, but to keep doing it periodically throughout the year. So let me see if there's anything else. And the other piece that wasn't in here that I felt was very important to address, unfortunately, because of our current situation, you know, we don't have that opportunity to see our students and families face to face. So we thought it was very important to take advantage of the opportunities that are present. So for example, next week, we are pushing out devices. So we have a device checkout plan at the, at the high school. I'm just going to use the high school as an example. And every, the middle school and the elementary school have their plans as well. So we thought on Monday through Wednesday at the high school, we're going to have kids driving up, picking up their devices and their vehicles. This would also be a great opportunity to have important handouts available. So we thought it would be a great time for students to pick up at the schedule, like the schedule that Michelle just went through with you, so they can see what the layout is going to look like, what the schedule is going to look like for the first three days of school. Also, the levy flyer, having that available for our families. So just taking advantage of every opportunity we can to provide all the resources our families and students need when they drive through to pick up their devices next week. So, and I think that is it. Next page, Fay. Just want to make sure I tapped into all our different.
BYO students that bring your own device, students, would they be able to drive through to get that information now?
Yes, of course, absolutely. And that's a good point. And I think I will, I'm, I'm working on, I have, I have devised a email to send out for the students that are checking out devices, the schedules. So I think that might be something that is very important to communicate as well. So thank you for giving me an idea there. Yeah, and so that is, that's our effort as the community, excuse me, communication, being a part of the communication task forces, just being able to communicate all the important information that our families need to know, including the survey, as well as reaching out to our non-English speaking families that, you know, so that they have more support. That's it.
Thanks Rav. Perfect, perfect. So I mean, as you can see here, as it is safe to do so, we will be returning to in-person learning. And the next slide, just really, we want to express our gratitude to all of our task force members, our task force facilitators, and all of our people behind the scenes. None of this work would have been possible without the tremendous efforts of all of these individuals. So thank you again very much. So I guess we will conclude, yes, round of applause for those people, they've been amazing. We're going, just going to pause. We did allow for some questions throughout the presentation, but are there any additional questions, comments, or concerns that any of our team can potentially feel for the school board?
For me, I mean, you've covered just about every possibility, for sure. And it's impressive work. And, and you know, it's, I'm sure as we move ahead with this, there will be some surprises that come up. But it seems like we're pretty, pretty well prepared for just about anything that we may encounter. So impressive work. So I'll open it up to the rest of the board and others for questions.
I would agree with Andrew that, you know, a great job and great foundation been set up by everybody. Dealing with the business myself, there's going to be lots of changes, but I am really impressed with the foundation that the task force has put together that, you know, I think will help give a guidance for directing through those changes and as the, as the situation modifies throughout the coming months.
Transportation said they have to do 50% of their students onboard. Are they going to have two, two times, you know, to go pick up the kids then? Or how does that happen?
That's, hang on. That's dependent on how we, how if we go back to school under a certain like AABB plan, one of the earlier plans, that's what that means. If we go back, it wouldn't apply if we all suddenly went, all the, all of us went back to 100% in-person learning.
Okay, that's one of the reasons for the hybrid model. You only bring half the kids to school every day.
Okay.
Okay. I, I'm now John Fairburn, I froze.
See that?
You froze, you all froze, actually. I was moving around, but, so.
I had a question, and like others have been saying, the amount of work that not only the task force, but all of you guys have done this summer is incredible. I think being mostly an observer on the task force, because I was on transportation team, and I told them tonight, I'm just riding on the bus. They're driving the bus, for sure. It's like every time you pick up a rock to say, this is what we're going to do with this, all these bugs scatter everywhere. And you think like, oh my gosh, didn't think of all that other stuff. So thank you for thinking of all that other stuff. And one of the questions I had, and it was in the first, somewhere in the first 10 slides or so, I think Sarah was speaking. And they were saying we were going to do training and education on how COVID spreads. And so if everybody knows, you know, what, why we're doing this distancing and such. And my question is, how can we do that so that that gets out not only to students, but to families? Because I know there's been a lot of talk of families wanting to form small study groups for their kids, which is totally understandable because they want to do it for their students' learning. But if those groups are done incorrectly, so that you get more spread of the virus within those groups, it's going to delay opening for all of us even longer. So how, how can we maybe manage that sort of education about how this spreads while we're totally remote?
Melinda, our plan to educate staff and students is to use our Safe Schools platform. And John is working on that, I'm speaking for John now. And we, you know, we, we have training we do every year on a number of things, concussions and reporting child abuse and all those kinds of things. I, I cannot answer your question because we cannot educate families unless they choose to be educated. We can offer this, but, and, and we plan to offer trainings to families on how to support remote learning and what our expectations are at the schools for hygiene. But I think what you're asking us to do might be on the, be on the scope unless people want to be educated.
Yeah, it does seem like it oversteps the bounds of the school because we do what happens at school and what happens in the school learning. But I think as far as our community, and maybe this is something that community members on our own time, we can talk to, is I understand why people want to do small groups and get their kids together to learn. But we also need to think of what effect that will have on keeping our schools in the state they're in.
I can just add, I, I think this is a really important point, Melinda, and I think it speaks to a little bit of, of kind of the health department's role in general public health messaging. And we spoke a lot about this in our subgroup, about sort of how the messaging needs to be for our community to get our kids back in school. We all have to take this really seriously. And I just hope as a country, we can kind of get to that place. But I do think that's going to be, require public health messaging kind of at a higher level. But I also don't see why this couldn't be a discussion. Maybe you or another interested party could start to have with other parents, either through the Facebook page, I don't know. Maybe someone else can speak to where that discussion might be the most valuable, but I think it's a very important one. So thank you for.
Sarah, Sarah, maybe you and I can connect on that? Because like Linda is saying, I think that the school district saying we're going to teach the parents is overstepping.
Yeah.
But as, I mean, you're, you're a public health pediatrician. What a perfect person to help, you know, talk about this.
I'm not saying overstepping, I'm just saying, we will offer it.
Yeah, we can't force.
We can't require it, and I don't know who can. But we can put, I can, you know, I'm still writing regular letters to families. I can put information in there. We can put links on the website. We can, we can do all kinds of things. I just, yeah, we can try to get the word out.
And, and I think we should do that. But at the same time, it's not like this information is not available from multiple sources. People have to be open to what we need to do to make our schools safe. And it won't matter what we do if there are those people who refuse to believe in the science of the pandemic. And so I think we have to have it available, and we have to be open to helping our families learn. But there are a lot of resources already available that don't require us to put additional school resources into educating the public.
Well, and I also, I also want to say that there are groups that are working to try to help working families figure out how to do things. I'm also sympathetic to people who need to, and as, you know, we're talking about phasing in small groups of students. If we're talking about four or five students in a, I, I don't think we should tell people they shouldn't be doing that. There are desperate stories out there that I'm reading every day in my email box, that I have to go to work, or my children aren't going to have a place to live and eat. And I need somebody to help with daycare, and daycares are still running. And so it has everything, it isn't all or nothing. You know, we, I think we have to support that too. Large groups, that would be difficult. But we're talking about bringing small groups in so that they can learn remotely on internet. That, and we're not going to be able to do that one-on-one. It's going to have to be.
Yeah, I, I wasn't saying like no small groups anywhere. It was, but just the, if you are planning on doing this.
Yeah, right.
To think of how you are doing this, that your small group that you have on Monday should be the same small group maybe that you have on Tuesday.
Right.
Don't be switching different small groups all the time. Don't be, you know, just, oh, everybody come over to my house on Tuesday. And the next week, a different, everybody comes over. You know, just the, the thought process of putting it together.
Cohorts.
Yeah.
And also letting them know that it's really risky.
Other questions or comments? Well, again, yes.
I think this is a quick question. Parent educators used in this model, would they, like the small breakout groups throughout the day, would they be leading some of those breakout groups? How are?
We're working on that. Direct, they will be doing some direct instruction. They, they might be doing some supervision if we, when we start bringing students in.
I have a final question. It's also quick, I think. When we moved the AABB, oh, actually, on the, the full online distance, I liked to see that the recess and breaks was built in throughout the day. When we moved to AABB and students are on the, on the campuses, how, how's recess and their break time?
We haven't figured that out yet. Yeah. We know, we, we know kids need recesses and break times, but we haven't figured that out.
Yeah. And the socialization and stay six feet apart. Yeah.
I think some of that will be working with cohort groups, and then staggering recess groups, smaller groups, rotating through play equipment with disinfecting in between, things like that. They won't all be going probably out at the same time like they did in the past.
Thank you.
One last chance for more questions. Well, again, thank you for, to all of you for your dedication and service. And it's an incredible plan, incredible detail. So thank you all. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 182020, approving the Ferndale School District 2020 reopening plan as attached tier two and made a part of the minutes.
Andrew, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 18-2020. District reopening plan is attached here too and made part of the minutes.
Okay, it's been moved to adopt Resolution 182020, approving the district's 2020 reopening plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. With that, we have reached the end of the agenda for this August 18th special meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Thank you all for your participation. The next meeting of the school board is scheduled for Tuesday, August 25th. Since the state has once again extended the changes in the Open Public Meeting Act rules to ensure safe meetings during the pandemic, we will be holding our August 25th meeting in the same Zoom format as this one. Thanks again, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Good night.